Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is the November 20th, 2018, meeting. If you would, join me for a quick invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time together. Pray that you will give us the wisdom and guidance, give us the compassion for our community, help us to do the things that we need to do to protect the citizens, to look out for the future of the town, and to make the decisions that are in the best interest of all. Lord, we thank you for those who fight for our freedom and those who have continued to do so. We pray for their safety and their safe returns. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, and we pray that we will find ways this week to return the grace and blessings that we've been given out to those around us, and our friends and family, and even people we don't know. Pray all these things in your holy name. Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. Hopefully, you had a chance to get the agenda packet that was out on the podium outside. It looks like this, white paper with a staple. There's also the yellow sheet that shows your public speaking guidelines, so if you intend to speak tonight, you need to make sure you're familiar with this. Please feel free to go get one if you missed it. The other thing is if you're speaking at a public hearing tonight, there are yellow sheets on that ledge there. You need to have your name on that sheet if you want to be considered and called at the public forum or one of the public hearings. The clerk will pick those up in just a few minutes, so please step up and get your name on the list if you intend to speak. With that, we now move to the time of presentations. This is presentation number one. Keith Joyce of Joyce &amp; Company, and he is here to talk about our financial audit. Mr. Joyce?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Happy to be with you again tonight. I'll try to be fairly brief. You should have a total of three separate documents in your agenda packet for night, as well as an actual copy of this year's CAFRA financial report. Obviously, that's a much larger, bit of an overwhelming document, probably 140 pages in total. And what I've got is just a summary of that and audit highlights, as well as the management letter and the governance letter I'll go over briefly with you. The audit highlights just take some of the larger or more prominent numbers out of this year's CAFRA to compare them to prior years, and I'll go through those briefly. If you have any questions, you're welcome to stop me at any time or contact me at any time with any of this data or anything that's in the CAFRA itself. And of course, the staff here can always be of assistance as well. Cash balances at year-end, just going down this fairly quickly. Your cash balance has increased from $90 million the prior year to roughly $141 million this year. The predominant reasons for that, increased growth in the town, as well as some debt issuances, parts and rec, and street bonds that were issued this year. You'll look, as we go further down the sheet, your fixed assets or capital assets, net depreciation. Each one of these line items for both or all three governmental, water, sewer, and electric increase from the prior year. With governmental net assets, net capital assets increasing by roughly $97 million from $323 million to roughly $420 million. The main impetus there were donations or infrastructure improvements from developers, roads, and streets, as well as continued capital outlay by the town. In the water and sewer fund, it increased $12.6 million from $226.6 million the prior year to $239.2. Once again, water and sewer lines from developer contributions is the main factor there. And electric was mainly capital outlay. It increased roughly $2.1 million from $36 million to $38.1 during the current year. To look at your general fund briefly, your total fund balance increased by $7 million from the prior year's $27.8, this year's $34.8 million. Unassigned fund balance also increased by $2.5 million from $19.377 to roughly $21.9 in the current year. Your unassigned fund balance was 44.4% of your budgeted expenditures, and your total fund balance was 70.7% of your total general fund expenditures. Both of those are very positive, very healthy numbers. Water and sewer fund, your cash balance increased by $19.3 million during the current year from roughly $43.4 million the prior year to $62.7. Your change in cash balances, up once again $19.3 million, and your change in net position increased by a little over $8 million in the current year, which is effectively the equity in the water sewer fund. Your electric fund, once again, all positive numbers. Cash balances increased by $657,000 to $8,661,000. Your change in net position, it increased $4.2 million during the current year, which was $2.1 million more than the prior. Adverrum taxes, your overall collection percentage stayed consistent at 99.9. Total tax collections during the year were $27.6 million, almost $27.7, and your valuation subject to tax increased by $441 million over the prior year, which brought you to a total of $6,460 million in total valuation for the town. You'll see your long-term debt increased in the governmental fund. Once again, the streets, parts and rec bonds that were issued during the year. While water, sewer, and electric both decreased, no new debt issued and payments that were made. Your total governmental debt is roughly $51.5 million for general governmental funds. Water and sewer is $53.6 million, while electric is $3.4. Other highlights, this is a clean audit report. There are no significant issues. Basically, that means that your financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the results of the operation and cash flows of the town. At the bottom, we like to note this each year, the town received the Certificate of Achievements of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2017 CAFRA. This year's will be submitted for that same award. This was the 24th consecutive year the towns received that award. Roughly 15% of the towns in the state received that in any given year. And I should have mentioned earlier, but the final footnote there, all the numbers on this little presentation have been rounded to the nearest $1,000. Any questions on any of that data?
I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
The general fund, unassigned fund balance, 44.4%, is that essentially our emergency fund or rainy day fund?
Yes, sir. And that percentage, like I said, it's your total unassigned fund balance has not been committed or any way obligated for anything else as a percentage of your total expenditures in that fund for the year. So looking at effectively, you could operate for about five or five and a half months just off your fund balance alone.
And the league has a minimum, I believe, right?
The league doesn't have a minimum. The town has a minimum fund balance policy. Vance can correct me if I'm wrong. I think 25% is what you strive to keep. You're obviously well above that. The league suggests somewhere in the 25% to 30% range, based on the size of the town and what your cash flows usually represent, but you're well over those numbers, very positive balance in either of those respects.
And then, one other math question. Forgive me, I'm not a...
What were you here for?
The valuation subject to tax increased by roughly, what, $400 million?
$441, yes.
Okay, so if you use your tax rate from the previous year to this year, you'd find the increase in collected taxes. If the tax rate stays the same, right?
The tax rates remained the same from the prior year. So the increase in the tax collections is a direct result, and if we backed into that percentage, it's going to be within a point or so of the actual increase in valuation for the current year, which was the continued growth of the town.
Yeah, yeah.
My question, but manager, you should help me. So in the last budget, we had a liability that we started funding for the first time. Can you remind me what that was?
So in the current fiscal year budget, it's OPEB, so Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Okay. So, yeah, in that case, there was, we had a dollar amount that was, I don't know if it was right or wrong or not, but how do you guys evaluate, did you guys evaluate whether, how much to put in those kind of funds, or is it...
Well, not, we don't tell clients or cities, municipalities, what to actually fund for those. We're going to come to that in one of the two letters, and I'll jump ahead to it real quickly. The governance letter, which is the two-page letter that you have there, effectively what that tells each year is just that there were no problems in performing the audit. The staff gave us the real books and records. We didn't have any trouble getting the information that we need. In a lot of years, there's really no meat to that letter. But in this year's, the one thing that we have, do have disclosed, it's in the second full paragraph, was the implementation of OPEB GASB-75. This is the first year that nationwide, it's not that the town made this option, it's a national accounting standard that came into effect this year, but you have to disclose the, and I'll try to say this correctly, but the current value of the future liabilities that you will have to pay to pay health care benefits for the current retirees. Very complex structure. I couldn't even begin to tell you how it's calculated. It's done by an actuarial firm each year that does probably hundreds of thousands of these valuations. They do just about all the ones in North Carolina. And the impact of that was roughly $18 million to the town. You've had a percentage of that based under a prior GASB that you've been showing as a liability each year, but effectively, that decreased the equity of the town by $18 million this year. So at some point in time, the town has to be prepared to pay that $18 million. You can do it by making a trickle-type donation where you put in $500,000 a year, a very large trickle, and have that money both invest in growth and through the actual donation start to reduce that liability down as you go forward. A lot of municipalities and counties, as well as states, have opted not to do that and wait and pay it when it comes due, but that's a huge burden somewhere down the road. You're better off, is the common understanding, to start doing something to relieve this debt now. Don't wait 20 years from now with the numbers $100 million before you start to fund it. It's just like putting money into a retirement account. If you do it today and you leave it alone, it's going to be worth a lot more money 20 years from now than it is if you wait to 20 years from now to make that first contribution.
You guys are generally, you're generally advised to do that, but as far as the numbers, it's up to the town to figure out what numbers they...
It makes the town's financials look better for both bond rating agencies and so forth, but it also, the bigger issue to me is relieving some of that debt and not sort of pushing it down the road.
Okay, thanks.
And then, I said, that's really the gist of the two-page letter. The one-page letter that you've got is a management letter. In municipality audits, there are several different types of findings. The more severe of these are called either material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and they are part of your actual financial statement. You don't have any of those. What we have here is a management letter with your much lower impact type items. A lot of times, we put just suggestions to staff in here that we'd like to see implement over the next couple of years, and we do have one finding this year, and I'll just read it to you. In our test of construction revenue, we noted an item that was collected in June of 2017 but was not processed and recorded until July 2017. This created an understatement of fiscal year 2017 revenues and fund balance at June 30 of 2017, the prior year. And Vance has already taken some measures to implement something, things to do on the last day of the fiscal year to prevent this happening. It's not just missed any money, it's just it got recorded on one day, and technically, it should have been recorded a day earlier, and it threw off the statements between those two years by that amount. It was an immaterial amount, but it was, I mean, enough that you should make a change for that. And that was the only item that we had.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, once again. 24th consecutive, that's what I heard. Got to call Mayor Holly Springs and find out how he's doing.
Did I say that out loud?
Yes. Now, we move to the time of consent agenda. We have several items on consent agenda, and I understand we have one add-on item.
So there are two things, Mr. Mayor. So in consent five, the cover sheet and the motion stays the same. The council has in front of them a change in the contract language, and that's contained in the document. It looks like this, council. It should be the first on that pile that you had under your agenda. And it's just to change the indemnity language, or indemnification language in the contract to match up with what our legal department prefers, and CSX, or I'm sorry, PECO's Construction has accepted that. So just need the, the motion that you'll make will be to approve this contract, not the one that came in your agenda package, and the only thing that's changed is the indemnity language.
Okay.
The other was, there's a drop-in consent item, some additional consent item. Unfortunately, the cover sheet did not get duplicated, but it is the appointments for the planning board and the board of adjustment from the ETJ, and you have that in the form of a resolution in front of you. So if you make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, it would ask that you add this additional item to your motion.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on the consent agenda, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval discussion?
I'm glad to see Consent 05 finally making some progress. That's improvement of Seaboard Street.
Yep.
We're going to make a parking lot back there, so that's going to start, I believe you said, January, Mr. Town Manager?
Yep.
After the Christmas season.
After Christmas, sir.
Glad to see that.
Very good. All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the motion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the items added and the replacement contract, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And I probably should have said this from the beginning, many of you noticed Councilwoman Dozier is not here tonight. She had something come up for work and was unable to be here. Just for the record, she wishes she could be here, but she had something come up. All right, so now we move past consent, and we move into the regular meeting agenda setting. So we've got the printed agenda in front of us. Mr. Town Manager, is there anything you'd like to recommend that we change?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add additional new business item in front of you as labeled as new business add-on.
Which one is that?
It would have been the last page.
Oh, the one that says add-on here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. All right, got it.
Is this just a modification in the approval given to Apex Friendship High to do some light work downtown?
Ah, yes, okay. So looking at our printed agenda, we have two new business, so this would possibly be new business three if we approve it. All right, with that one, is there anything else from a council member that would like to be changed? If not, is there a motion to approve the printed agenda with new business number three added?
A moment, so moved.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the change, the approval of the agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, so the add-on item is going to be new business number three. So we now move to public forum, and a public forum is a time where we get to listen to you. You have an opportunity to share with us whatever your thoughts are on anything related to Apex. Just as a reminder, if you are here to speak on a public hearing item, just hang on to that because that time will come. But right now, it is public forum time. I see one, two, three, four names up here, and I just want to make sure Jennifer Jobe, Tracy Shelting-Ga, Shelting-Ga, Sarah McGrath, and Heidi Snyder, in that order. Come on up, Jennifer Jobe. And while you're coming, just as a reminder, we have a three-minute time limit, and hopefully you were able to become familiar with the sheet. The light will be green until you get close to the end, and please start by saying your name and your address, and then go right in. We look forward to hearing you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jennifer Jobe. I live at 313 Kelly West Drive in the Kelly West neighborhood. I apologize for my interruption before. Apparently, opening up the meeting agenda also kicked off the Hamilton soundtrack, so I don't know why that was. But I'm here to deliver a petition with 164 signatures, as of an hour ago, it has a couple more now, of my neighbors calling for the town to come up with a specific action plan to make sure the stoplight intended for the corner of Kelly Road and Beaver Creek Commons Drive is constructed immediately. The town has made it clear that it knows the intersection is a dangerous hazard that has already caused multiple accidents. It has become such a serious situation that the local news has covered it, and police are giving out daily traffic tickets to try to control the illegal U-turns taking place there. And yet, the light is six months past the time that we said it was told, or we were told, rather, that it was going to happen. The town has posted to its social media portals that it is out of your hands, that the town has conducted the study, the NC Department of Transportation has approved the stoplight, and now it's up to Beazer Homes to come to terms with a homeowner in Abington to buy land to put the stoplight on. The homeowner posted publicly recently that she has waited for weeks for Beazer to deliver the paperwork on the sale, and it's obvious that the developer is stalling. The town's position seems to be that there is nothing that you can do. The signers of this petition and I respectfully disagree. There is pressure that can be put on the developer through inspection holdups, through not agreeing to permit more developments, and through constant contact with the developer. The stoplight was supposed to be erected by the end of May. It is now coming into winter with more dark hours and bad weather. With the holiday shopping season upon us, it's likely more people will be leaving Beaver Creek, and they'll be leaving in greater numbers and more distracted. And if you've been by there, you have to go and make a right turn and make a U-turn supposedly at the Kelly Road and 64 intersection, but you actually need to make the, or most people are making the U-turn into a new development, which is also causing issues there. We can only expect more accidents, and hopefully, none of them will be fatal. Finally, I'd like to note, along with many commenters on the petition, which I brought along and you can read, that we hope this situation highlights a serious flaw in how developments are constructed in Apex. We are a rapidly growing town. Some would say too rapidly. Several new neighborhoods are going to be discussed tonight alone. As it stands, according to the Town of Apex post on Nextdoor, a requirement for approval for building a new development is to conduct a study during the building process and then construct whatever traffic requirements are needed. Unfortunately, if the builder delays that process, the town's leverage is seriously weakened because ground is already broken and options are limited. It seems obvious that conducting these studies is really a math problem. If we add X new cars on the road from Y houses, what will the resulting flow of traffic look like? There's no reason, or at least to our eyes, why this study shouldn't be, shouldn't take place and the signals constructed before ground is permitted to be broken. I know that Apex wants to be attractive to developers, but there's no slowing of growth around here.
Thank you, Ms. Jobe.
Yes, thank you.
And just so that you know, we did meet with the developer today, and we will, without getting too far into it, I want everybody to know, both anybody who's signed a petition and is affected by this, Town Manager and I and several staff members met with him today. We are going to be holding that developer to account. The paperwork has already been delivered to the homeowner, so now, really, it's a matter of getting the signature and moving to the next steps. We've already asked them to go ahead and get the polls ordered in anticipation, so we're expecting those to go up. We appreciate, though, that everybody wants this done, and we want it as well. But, and I normally don't comment, but this has gotten a lot of recognition, so we are very well aware, and we're actively working on this developer right now. Tracy Shelting-Ga.
Yes, sir. I think that we accidentally signed up on two sheets for public forum.
Okay. Do you know which one you want to be on?
Four.
I'll travel. No, which number?
Four.
Four?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with your permission, I'll move your name. All right. All right, then Sarah McGrath?
I'm, um, I'm...
Same?
Yes.
Okay. And Heidi Snyder?
The same.
Okay, all right. All right, having reached the end of the list, I will close the public forum. And we will now move into public hearing number one. As we turn the page, public hearing number one and two, we'll do them at the same time. This is the question of annexation first and also the possible rezoning for 18 CZ-17, Jordan Vista's PUD. And we have Lauren Stadtmayer presenting. Ms. Stadtmayer.
Good evening. This is Annexation 636 and rezoning case 18 CZ-17 for Jordan Vista's PUD located at New Hill Olive Chapel Road. So the property is located in this general area. The proposed properties to be rezoned are located south of Horton Ridge Boulevard and west of New Hill Olive Chapel Road. The properties are generally bounded by Jordan Oaks subdivision to the west, Jordan Manners to the north, and Woodbury subdivision to the east. This will also be petition to be annexed tonight as well. The properties are currently zoned Wake County Residential 40W and Wake County Residential ADW. The adjacent zonings are to the north, Plan Unit Development Conditional zoning; to the east, Plan Unit Development Conditional zoning of Wake County Residential 40W; south, Wake County Residential 40W; and to the west, Plan Unit Development Conditional zoning. The applicant is proposing to rezone these properties to Plan Unit Development Conditional The 2030 Land Use Map identifies the proposed site as low-density residential. The proposed Plan Unit Development Conditional zoning is consistent with that classification. The proposed land uses are consistent with adjacent properties classified as low-density residential on the 2030 Land Use Map. The proposed properties to be rezoned contain vacant with existing structure, ponds, and streams. There was a typo on your staff report. There was a cemetery, but it's been removed and relocated per Wake County, so just disregard that part. The applicant has conducted a neighborhood meeting on April 11, 2018, and a copy of the neighborhood report is in your packet. The applicant has proposed a limited number of uses to ensure that these properties will be developed consistent with the surrounding residential uses. The permitted uses proposed for these properties are single-family, accessory apartments, utility minor, recreation facility private, greenway, park active, park passive. The PD plan proposes an overall maximum density of 2.87 units per acre. The proposed lot width is 50 feet, and minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot Type A buffer along the north property boundary, a 30-foot Type B along the eastern boundary, a 20-foot Type B southern, a buffer along the southern property east of the stream buffer, so probably about right here to right here where the east, where the stream buffer is, a 10-foot Type B buffer along the southern property west of the stream buffer, and a 10-foot Type B along the western property boundary. There is a proposed buffer zoning condition I'll be addressing later on in the presentation regarding these. The PUD will have town utilities. The applicant has provided a full list of architectural conditions, and that is in your staff report. The standard conditions for single-family homes, including two additional proposed zoning conditions, number 13, all single-family detached homes to be preconfigured for solar energy system, and number 14, what I mentioned previously. The property shall provide a 20-foot Type B along the southern property boundary if the existing pond on this property is retained. The buffer may be reduced to a 10-foot Type B buffer from the southwest corner of the project boundary extending east to the stream buffer on this property. Jordan Vista's will extend Horton Ridge Boulevard on east-west major collector and to the west and extend the north and south residential streets from Jordan Manners into the future subdivision. New Hill Olive Chapel will have a full movement access aligning with existing Lex Lane, and access points to the south and east for future development have been included in the PUD design. The road and pedestrian improvements proposed are consistent with the TIA and comply with the Apex Bike and Transportation Plans. The full list of improvements is in your packet. The Parks and Rec Advisory Commission reviewed Jordan Vista's PUD at their August 29, 2018 meeting and recommended fee and lieu. The fee rate will be set based on the date of PUD approval and will be applied to the number of lots proposed at the time of master subdivision approval. The approval of the rezoning is reasonable because the proposed Plan Unit Development Conditional zoning is consistent with the low-density residential land use map classification and zoning of the adjacent properties. Planning Board heard this rezoning case at their October 8 meeting and unanimously approved. Planning staff can recommend approval with conditions as offered by the applicant. I'll be happy to answer questions. I'll be happy to answer questions as well as the applicant in the audience.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions for Ms. Stadtmeyer?
Maybe it may be to you or to Jeff, but so coordination with the Horton Ridge Boulevard and the Jordan Oaks, is that something that the town requires? I mean, what's, how can we make it so that road gets built at the same time? Or to you? Okay, I'll ask you the question. Okay, thanks.
Okay. And we'll hear from Mr. Roach in just a moment. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Roach. And just as a reminder, applicant typically gets nine minutes of presentation time.
Thank you, sir. I'll try not to take all of it tonight, but Jeff Roach, Peak Engineering and Design. I'm here tonight representing the four property owners, as well as Gordon Paulson, who's here, who has kind of put this whole package together. I do want to point out a couple of things. One is, three of the property owners are here tonight. Nina Church is here. I appreciate her coming, or she was, there she is. The Demers are here, as well as the Prus are here, and I appreciate them all coming out tonight to support this. They've each signed up, I think, or are available if you have questions specifically for them. I am kind of talking on their behalf tonight. So I do appreciate Lauren with her presentation, kind of going through the overall process for it, what we've been working with since April of this year on trying to get this last piece here. It was very telling looking at the overall zoning of the area. You can see here, you know, Jordan Vista's really does fill in kind of that last little gap here in taking it to a PUD to the single-family residential use. It also works not only with the 2030 land use map, but we all know there's a 2045 land use map that's currently in process, will be here probably January, February of next year. It also matches with that one. So we're looking more than just in the next couple of months, we're looking, you know, 10 years, 15 years out. So a couple of things, Mr. Gant, you had alluded to it and kind of stole my thunder there. Bill Daniel is actually here tonight as a master subdivision plan approval for Jordan Oaks. I spoke to him briefly ahead of time. They actually show the extension of Horton Ridge Boulevard through our property. We are coordinating in this kind of northwest corner here. I don't know what his plan is for access. It could be construction access, but it allows them a better access to go ahead and extend now. We've been in discussion with them. We met with them a couple of times over the past couple of months to get that done. So it is moving forward as a major collector. So that's the Jordan Oaks discussion. One other thing to point out from the layout here, we have access, this is mainly vehicular access. We also want to point out there's a multi-use path along Horton Ridge Boulevard. Mr. Gant, you and I have spoken about this before. There's also a multi-use path in Jordan Manners on the north side of Horton Ridge Boulevard that we are going to extend into our property that will run south generally in this area here along Turner Pines down to the southern portion as well. What that'll do, that'll allow our residents to walk through our development, through Jordan Manners, and actually get to the little Beaver Creek Greenway that's in place. So we're trying to connect all these projects together for not only vehicular access, but also pedestrian access. Utility extensions are pretty straightforward following the ravines and the rivers and stuff. One other thing we did want to point out is, in coordination with staff, there's a couple of large trees down here, kind of wedged in the stream buffer between the Pru property and the Elmers property. And what we've actually identified them to try to preserve them if possible. We're going to work with staff to identify and make sure they're healthy, but they're fairly large trees that we're looking out for. So we're not taking this just as a, hey, let's strip the entire site, let's go build new homes. We're trying to actually look at what's on the site and to preserve, and you can see a lot of the trees and stream buffers that are shown here. So with that, I'm here really to answer any questions you guys may have tonight for me, but it is coming in with single-family. We are asking for 50-foot lots. We're actually doing a layout right now, a little bit bigger lots simply because the home product is slightly larger, gives us a little bit of flexibility if we get approved for 50. Some of those cul-de-sac lots are fairly tight as they pie out. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you may have for me now. There are three conditions, I think one of them was actually added already. Number 14 was added. 13 is it's pre, the homes are pre-wired with solar as requested by Mr. Jensen in a previous meeting. One of the things we want to point out is the Demers have a very nice pond right here. What we're asking for from staff is actually some flexibility in this buffer. Typically, we would, the ordinance only requires a 10-foot buffer there. We had actually proposed a 20-foot on the south side. We're actually kind of backtracking because we want to try to save this pond. It's a fairly significant feature that if we can save it, and what we're asking for is a reduction back to a 10-foot buffer there, may end up with some retaining walls, but it's an option to save the pond. We've also been working with Mr. Hicks, who owns the property right here, and what we've provided here is actually a 20-foot Type A buffer for a certain portion of his property, as well as we have a stub street right here. The plan is to vegetate the end of that stub street, build to the town standards, which is within 10 feet of the property line, grade up to his property line, and then replant to keep him from having to look at cars and people coming in. So that's another condition that is actually written here, and we'll discuss the wording with staff. So with that, I've got one other, and I think I'll be asked in a moment about it. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions from council?
So by coordination, you do mean that, like, so if they build that street to the edge there and there's no houses yet, I'm not sure of the timing, but is there, does that coordination mean you're willing to put the road in before any of the houses are built if it's delayed?
I don't want to speak for Bill Daniel, but he's sitting in the back, and Collins back there as well, as he snuck in. I think one of the things that we're looking at is either having them build it with a contribution from our developer, or as soon as, it's basically the first thing that we have to build is to make that connection. It benefits both the developer I'm working for as well as the adjacent one for Jordan Oaks to have that road connected. So we're going to work through that. I know their site plan's coming up later tonight, so that's, I don't know, you can ask them as well. So, but that's generally what we're looking for is coordination very early on.
And with the traffic impact analysis, I saw there were some recommended improvements that you guys put in there. Were those all the improvements that was recommended from the analysis?
They are, because most of the improvements out here, for example, the traffic signal at Old US 1 and New Hill Olive Chapel has already been funded, it's just waiting on the exact same thing that Kelly Road Beaver Creek one was waiting on, which are warrants. As soon as it hits that warrant and DOT approves a signal, it gets funded, it gets installed. So we can't do that. Same thing with Hume Olive at New Hill Olive Chapel as well.
Okay. All right.
Is there going to be a signalized intersection at, what is that, Horton Ridge Boulevard?
There is not proposed one now. I foresee this eventually needing one because Horton Ridge Boulevard will eventually connect over to Friendship Station, and it will eventually go all the way down to Old US 1 west of the Jordan Point entrance. So it will be a fairly significant connection point. And if you actually look at the spacing between us and Hume Olive, it's almost right in the middle of the two roads. So it's a logical location, it's not proposed at this point. I think when that road's connected, it will have to be looked at again.
Yes, I had you have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jensen.
We had talked briefly about adding solar to PV systems to 10 of the houses.
That's correct.
At 3 kilowatts. Is that in your?
If you only want 3 kilowatts, that'd be fine, but...
Minimum.
No.
I'm sorry, we did 4 kilowatts.
You had mentioned four previously. So with that, I just happened to jot down some language real quick.
Thank you for that.
But yes, we are committing to doing 10 solar units, the other 4 kilowatts. The other thing we've committed to is making one of those 10 a model home, so that what will happen is the builder will be able to showcase the solar, and the people that are looking for new homes can come in and pick that lot that they want, and they can add solar on, or the builder can choose to do one. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
And I think, I think there's language needed for that one. Diane, is that, you need language for the solar one, Amanda?
Well, we thought you were going to pass something out, but we have our own.
I have it written. I'm sorry. I can read it. I have a copy for the town attorney or mayor or whoever needs it.
Do you want to coordinate?
We have it. Lauren has copies for you all.
Okay.
And we have the conditions as offered by the applicant, and then we have a staff recommendation to add to it. But Lauren, pass it out so they can read along.
Keep one for yourself so you can compare.
I can see what I was supposed to say.
Uh-huh.
Do you need one as well?
All right, thanks. And while you're doing that, if it's all right, Mr. Roach, I'll go ahead and get started on the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I see that either Michelle or John Demers, Demers, that's how everybody says your last name, they say it three times.
It's been butchered, you have no idea.
I just did that, just having fun with you.
It's just fine.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John Demers, 2508 New Hill Olive Chapel Road. Good to see everybody again tonight. We really do support this effort. We've watched the area grow since we moved out there 22 years ago, 1996, and truly, it was the boonies. We tell people in Apex, we're in New Hill, and they go, where's that? We're about five, oh, way out there. Well, way out there isn't way out there anymore. And so my wife and I and our kids have enjoyed the large yard running Beaver Creek. We used to walk it all the way to the New Hope Valley Railway, to the train yard there. But again, Apex needs to grow, and the community needs to embrace New Hill. And as we've watched the homes being developed around us, we've been very pleased to see the efforts that the town of Apex has put in to making that happen. We're delighted to see the solar component added to our particular property. We're looking forward to seeing what's happening when it moves along, and we may very well become residents within that same development. So we support it, and we hope you all will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demers. All right, since that's the end of the list, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll ask if there are any questions on the conditions that were just handed out on the piece of paper.
I guess I'll make kind of an opinion. I understand what staff wants to do with their condition add-on to the solar, the lots on, to state it, the lots on which these homes are located shall be identified on the plat, final plat, the homes that are going to have the solar. I think we really have to rely on the developer to do that, because I think it's very difficult in the front end to designate which lots are going to have it, solely because you don't know which potential homeowner that's willing to do the solar, wants to do the solar, which lot they're going to have. So I think there's a mismatch there between the ability to designate the lots and then to have that specific homeowner add solar to that house.
Where did the final plat wording come from? Was that...
Can I please answer that?
Yeah, oh yeah, good, thanks.
So this wording was added to prior rezonings. It's proposed in some other rezonings tonight. It is what staff believes we can enforce. We are not allowed to hold up building permits, we're not allowed to hold up certificates of occupancy. We only can hold up plats, and the plats can be revised. So if the first plat shows all 10 lots shown, and then the developer builder only ends up building three, the next plat that comes in will say, okay, how many did you build? You built three. We need seven shown on this plat. They'll show seven. The next plat will come in, or maybe the last plat comes in, and we're like, okay, you still have two more to build. You need to tell us which ones. Well, it's lots 40 and 50. Well, okay, never mind, we're going to actually do it on 22 and 23. You just do a plat revision. It doesn't come back to council, it's not a big deal thing. The surveyor turns in a new plat, we review it in a few days, it's recorded. So that is the best way that we think we can be consistent across all the projects that have this condition and that we can actually enforce it. Because otherwise, when it gets to the end of the project, there could be zero actually completed.
That sounded reasonable to me.
Yeah, it does to me, too.
What do you think?
I'd like to hear from the applicant. That works.
So, Mr. Jensen, anything that goes on the final plat is recorded in perpetuity. So once it gets put on there that there's a lot that has solar, Lot 40 has solar, it has to stay with solar forever, it can't change. So, well, staff's sort of shaking their head, I don't understand, and of course, I'm not an attorney, so I'm telling you, you know, what my understanding is, is that, you know, having it on the final plat, identifying it, doesn't give the builder that option to give you the solar. So what's going to happen is people are going to stop saying, I'm not going to do solar if it's going to make me put it on a final plat. I'll do it as a, hey, maybe we'll offer it, Mr. Jensen, but I can't give it to you as an agreement for our rezoning. So what we're offering here is simply a, I don't want to call it a handshake agreement, but it's an agreement to the council, standing here tonight, with my client sitting right here, who's supposed to deliver that, saying, we're going to have 10 solar units on the ground by the time we're done. You've got 152 lots, give or take, to find 10 of them that will end up with, at least 10 that are going to end up with solar powers by the time the developer's out of this. So I'm just concerned about putting on the final plat, simply because it stays there forever. So...
So if it's all right, Councilman, I'd like to see if our town attorney has a thought on revisions of final plats.
So I'm wondering if Mr. Roach is thinking about the master, the final plat of the master subdivision plat that's recorded, but as far as I know, the final plats for each phase can be revised.
Of course they can, but there again, so we produce, prior to the turnover of the roads, we produce a final plat that gets the lots on the ground ready for a builder. So it's not in the master subdivision plan, it gets actually to on the ground they're built. We've identified Lot 27 as requiring solar. Well, the builders may not find somebody that wants Lot 27 that has to do solar, so now they've got to go back and revise the plat. The problem with revising the plat is, I've got to go find another lot in that same plat to move it to, or I've got to find another commitment somewhere else in the site. It's a paperwork nightmare. I'm trying to stay away from a commitment or the language that's going to require all this additional work when the builder's there, and he says, I can pick any of these 150 lots and do solar on them. Instead, what you're telling him is, he has to commit when the roads are built and nobody's stepped in to try to buy a house, and the builder is going to say, here are the 10 lots that I think solar should be on. I'm just trying to give him the flexibility to still work with Mr. Jensen to do what is a green-type product, yet not be hamstrung in saying, I have to do it on these lots. So I'm just looking for the flexibility for him to do that as best he can.
I would agree with Mr. Roach. Tying somebody into a lot didn't seem reasonable. If I go in and want to buy that lot, but I don't want solar.
Well, I think the difference, and the difference here is, staff can't enforce a handshake agreement if it's not on a plat. They can enforce the plots.
If it's not enforceable, it's not a condition of the PUD.
Right. And so, and so the assertion that a plat, a plat, sorry, the final plat can be modified. So if somebody looks at it and says, I'd rather do the solar over on this lot, then there is a modification. Yeah, there's paperwork involved. What I'm hearing is, that's the only way our staff can determine how to enforce the agreement otherwise, unless you have an idea of how it can be enforced and be more than just goodwill.
Well, I think I, I don't want to pull, I like the idea of having solar on the homes, but I'm almost to a point where I'm going to say, Mr. Jensen, I apologize, I really can't, because it really is going to hamstring the builder that's out here. In a public forum, I'll come to you and say, I can't commit to the solar, but after the meeting's over, I can tell you that our builder will still do 10 lots, if you're willing to accept that handshake agreement afterwards, versus having it tied down on the final plat. And because I think what's happening is, in the future, this came up two days ago, or yesterday, the language was incorrect. I was supposed to be here a month ago, and we delayed it because of the cemetery. So it came up a day ago, my builder hasn't had a chance to figure out the language to see how this impacts him. What I would like to do is, if this is going to be a condition on every zoning from here on out, what I want to do is have language that we have time to review as a development community, and that way, the town attorney doesn't have to worry about, oh, this language isn't right at the meeting here. I'd like it to be taken care of before I stand up here with everybody. Because if we're going to continue to agree to these, which are great, I just got to have the language in place, so I'm not, not, every builder's not asking the same question, what do I have to do and when do I have to do it? So I'm, I'd like to pull the 10 units, Mr. Jensen, and come back with you and tell you that Gordon, who is, will be...
Here's the other thing, is that the way, it runs like an easement over the property, so for the next 50 years...
Right.
That's the problem, it runs with the title, so 50 years from now, if we find...
Well, before you testify...
Sorry.
Let's let Mr. Roach keep the floor.
Yeah, so that was part of the original comment, was that whatever gets recorded on that final plat stays with that final plat until something has changed 50, 100, 200 years from now, whenever it is. So whether it's an easement, whether it's a solar on the home requirement on the final plat, that stays with that piece of land forever. It doesn't go away unless we come back and try to modify it.
Okay, if I could move this forward just one second, I'm sorry. It sounds to me like you're offering that, or you're saying that you're not comfortable with the conditions of the final plat being the enforcement mechanism.
Correct.
And that, and that you don't mind offering this up without that, but you recognize and acknowledge that there's... acknowledge that there's not a hard enforcement mechanism.
Correct.
But you're, but you're willing to offer it verbally. So the question now comes, I think I'd like to direct to Councilman Jensen, because this was clearly something you were negotiating with. Are you comfortable with that scenario or, or not?
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with it so that we can move ahead.
Okay.
My one question is, though, can we do, require five solar PV installations by the 80th CO?
Once again, to enforce it, it has to be on the final plat. So I, I, Mr. Jensen, I'm just caught. I don't.
I know.
I have a builder that's uncomfortable with the commitment at picking the lots. That's what it is. So we still want to offer it. It will still be on the model home, but I think just having it on the final plat has just, has caused a little bit of concern. So, and we will continue to look into language on how to do this without tying up a final plat. But like I said, it was a last-minute discussion.
Okay.
Can I, can I say that, you know, obviously, if we don't, if we can, if you don't have language there, and we just have the kind of applicant language, and we start noticing that it's not happening, then we can adjust, you know, at that point, say, oh, they're not actually doing the, whatever they're required, and can be stricter about it. I mean, there's, we can kind of check these things.
So staff's concern, Mr. Gannis, that we don't have the ability to track those planning, does not remove, review single-family permits, and there is no system in our software or databases or any way to flag. We can't hold up building permits. And so, if, but if they're identified on a plat, then inspections knows this lot has to have solar, or, and then they are updated when final plats are revised. They receive copies of those revisions.
It would be later, but you can see them from the photos from the planes, so you can kind of tell later that they're on there or not. It'd be kind of a longer-term evaluation of it. But, so you may miss one, you may notice they're not being installed directly, and then we can, we can adjust at that point. You can see them from the Google Maps.
I just don't know how that.
How do you adjust?
Well, we start to change the language at that point, but it'd be a slower, yeah, years-in-the-making process.
Without, without, so from staff's perspective, the final plat can be modified, and it, and at least from, it sounds like perpetuity is not necessarily a thing, regardless of what's been said, that a plat can be modified multiple times, and you can remove something with a revision of a plat. That's what our staff is telling us.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't disagree with it.
Okay. So from, from what you were suggesting, there has to be a mechanism by way we can, we can, if we're going to accept a condition as a hard condition, we have to have an enforcement tool, or mechanism, or a place where we can say, stop, and it's legal, right? And that's the key. We have to find a way that doesn't cause a legality question. So it has to be agreed at the condition now. And, and not that I don't believe anybody's goodwill, but if, if it's a handshake or a verbal agreement, you, you have to be willing to sort of take a chance, that you might not get what you want. But if you think you might, and that's the best way to move forward, that's one possibility. But it sounds like the applicant is not comfortable with the, with the final plat suggestions by staff. At least that was the last I heard. Is that still true?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's all right. And that wasn't fair, because I turned to you right at the last. So it sounds to me, though, that the applicant is not comfortable with the final plat mechanism being used to enforce the condition.
Correct.
Even though staff and our attorney have said that there is no concept of perpetuity, meaning that you can, you can revise a plat multiple times.
That's correct.
Okay, but you're not comfortable with the condition saying final plat used for?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So that's still, that's still the case. You haven't changed your mind?
That's, and that's why I was just talking, like.
Okay.
To see, it's, it's.
Jeff, if we make sure that that comes off there, the problem is.
But it can't.
A third of my time is spent trying to get these things off pieces of property where people say, no problem, it's an innocent deal, and then the property gets encumbered for a long time, forever, and you can't get it off. And so you can't do stuff with the property. So what happens is.
Well, hang, hang on. If you want to speak more than to your.
Correct. That's, I was.
Yeah, if you want to speak more than to Mr. Roach, you need to come up, but we've already closed the public hearing. You are the applicant, however, so.
We have.
I'd like, I'd like, I'd like for you to, but I want to make sure that you're not just saying what your perspective is, because our attorney and our staff have told us that you can revise these plats as many times as you need to, until the project is done. And if, at the end, the final revision of the final plat represents what got built, then what does it matter? So that's kind of where I'm, I'm not sure I understand what your concern is.
Gordon Polson.
Yes, sir.
414 Forsyth Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Like most things in life, most of us fight the old battles we just have been through, right? So that's, that's what really this is, is that, that what happens is I get concerned when something gets encumbered on a piece of property, that people said, no problem, it won't be a problem down the road, but down the road, it is a problem, and, and it's, whether it's Duke Power, somebody else's going to, easement encumbrance on a property, I can't get rid of it, even though they said it was, was going to be a problem 10 or 15 years ago. So my concern on this is, if there's a mechanism that we can do it, that it doesn't get encumbered on a piece of property, because if it stays on, and it goes with the plot, it says, this has to be a solar home, that if I sell this, that house to Jeff, 20 years from now, we find out that the moonbeams is a better way than the sunshine to sell your house. He can't change it, because he's encumbered with that on his property. So there needs to be a vehicle that that comes, that that's not.
So I'm hearing.
It doesn't run with title. That's what I want to make sure. It doesn't run with title.
So let's get clarification.
So, so the commit, what is being committed to is the installation, not the maintenance of, not the, in perpetuity. Jordan Vista is committing to do the installation, so it doesn't encumber the future. If, if you sell it to me.
Okay, it doesn't run, it doesn't run with title.
You put it on, you sold it to me, I can take it off if I want to.
The condition barely requires the installation.
So the seventh word in this condition has installation, so that's the focus, and that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
And we can move, we can move those from lot to lot with no problem?
Yeah.
Fine.
As long as you have 10 by the end, your last plat might have all 10. Have to come back for a zoning condition change if you don't have 10 by the end.
It's only for installation.
Okay.
So once the house is built.
So let me ask you, has this been a problem with other people who've made this commitment and didn't do it?
It's very new, so we're working through it. I mean, it's new.
One builder recently, was going to install three of them, and he did define which, he intended to define which lots they were going to go on, so.
So if all the things here that we've said of that is actually that it works, I think we're fine.
Can I, can I interject one piece of language that I got from an attorney that I just happened to know in the room? I won't say who it was, but if I could add, Diane, I'd like to add language at the very end. It says, it says, located shall be identified on the final plat and may be amended at time, from time to time. That way, it gives Gordon the chance, the opportunity, or the builder the opportunity to modify the plat.
That, that's fine, because the zoning conditions are included on the plat as well.
Correct.
The zoning conditions will have to be met, so that's.
What I would like to do is.
No, that's fine.
No interpretation needed. That way, we can modify it. So I think with that, I think.
Okay. So I just handwrote, and may be amended, which is force.
And be amended from time to time. Correct.
I just left off the time-to-time part, because I think that's implied.
Yeah, that way, there's no, there's no interpretation.
Yeah, yeah. So just one last check with Diane. If we add, and may be amended at the end, planning can still.
Well, we, we have as may be amended from time to time, and that is fine with us.
Okay.
Okay, you're, you're good with that language, and we can move ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I think we may have gotten some forward progress.
How many, how many plats are submitted in a subdivision? Is there like a number of lots that you have to submit a plat for?
So the minimum number in a phase is 15, unless it's the very last phase, and it could be less at that point. But the minimum number is 15.
And if you, so to submit a plat, you have to pay a fee, right? And then to come back and revise, you have to pay another fee?
The fee for a plat revision is $100.
And if they're just bringing in a future plat, it's already a plat they have to pay for anyway. So up until the very last plat, I don't think they'll be paying that, the revision fee. They'll just be paying their standard plat fees.
Can we switch to this? I have something else to talk about.
Um, yeah, pause for one second. I think, was it, on that one topic, on that condition, are there any open questions? I think we nailed everything there. Okay, yes, Councilman Moore.
Uh, Horton Ridge Boulevard concerns me a little bit. There's a lot going on out there. Jordan Point, Jordan Manor, Jordan Vista, across the street. It seems to be a future connection all the way to Friendship Station, but it seems to be a potential major intersection that might need a stoplight at some point. What are we doing as a town to be prepared for the installation of that? These developments are contributing to the future issue, right? Are we going to ping the one development that comes in in 10 years with the burden of putting in that stoplight, or are we sharing this burden with all of these developments at the current time?
When the development comes in for consideration, the TIA has done, and it says a traffic signal needs to be installed, that development will pay for that traffic signal.
Doesn't seem equitable to me to, so if a, if a 15-lot subdivision develops over there on the corner, then they're going to have to pay for that. What does that, what does it cost to you?
Right, 50 lot. Is it, has, isn't it 50 to initiate the TIA?
Yeah, there's a minimum size. It might be 50. I don't have that number. All right, we didn't get our traffic. It's more. Yeah, I thought it was more, but I don't, our traffic guy is not here, so. I'm not the traffic expert.
And it would be limited by constitutional rules regarding exactions. You wouldn't be able to require a developer to pay more than his proportional share.
So the town is burdened with the rest of it, essentially. If they're paying their portion, somebody's got to pay the rest. That'd be us, right? I mean, is there any way for us to be more forward-thinking with that intersection and a potential stoplight needed? I mean, the developer told us it's going to be a major connection, and I think we've had this discussion, too, on these other developments. Horton Ridge Boulevard, going all the way from down here up to Friendship High School.
It will be years before that intersection meets warrant. We heard tonight about an intersection, Kelly Road, Beaver Creek. That barely met warrant for a stoplight. And you know how, you know the, the traffic pressure there and the, and the cross-traffic pressure. So the standards are, the threshold's pretty high to get a warrant met through, through DOT. We just can't, we don't own the road. We just can't go out and, and put a stoplight up, because we feel like that's a good place to put one. DOT's highway, they say yea or nay. They have, there are engineering standards that need to be met. You know, yeah, I mean, you, you could say to the, the developers that are teeing into New Hill Olive Chapel Road, you need to dedicate additional right-of-way. I don't know, is that, has that already been done, Mr. Roach? Yeah. So that, our, our transportation folks are looking at that during this process. Just, you know, to say to this, to this project, hey, you need to, you need to pay for a, a traffic light.
Or their portion.
It's just not going to meet more. Well, yeah. If the council wants to set something up for, you know, looking in, to do that, to tag if we can, but that starts to look like a transportation.
So if, if I may, with the transportation, a TIA that's conducted, those transportation impacts are recommended. It takes into account this developer's impact on the transportation in the area, as well as other things that have already been approved. And those transportation impacts are recommended, and the developer does whichever ones that meet the needs of the development and the impacts of the traffic, but is tempered by their proportional share. So the key that you have to remember is, is, you know, they may be the last one or the first one in, but they can't be required to do it all for everybody, because they, they are only required to pay for their proportionate share. So that presumably, in a spread around, they're providing other transportation improvements that contribute towards their share, while ultimately, they may not contribute in the light at the end of the day. They've participated in other transportation impacts, other transportation improvements, I should say. Does that make sense?
It does, which is kind of falls in the category of transportation impact fees, which is we're restricted on by the state.
Correct. If, if the legislature, the General Assembly would give us the authority to, to collect fees on developments that are coming in for, for current and future traffic improvements, that would be outstanding, but.
It would be more equitable.
It would be equitable, Miss Killingsworth's point. So it's, the legislative climate has not been favorable to that.
So there's a scenario where we, there's a small neighborhoods that progressively get built on that road, and, and the town may be on the hook eventually for that, but instead, instead of a developer in the, in that scenario. A bigger development would may, may trigger that.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on this item? As a reminder, we're looking at, if we intend to approve this rezone for this PUD, then we need to annex, which is why there's two public hearings, one and two, because we don't have the authority to rezone until we annex, and we don't want to annex unless we're going to rezone. So we have some conditions. I'll ask, is there a motion that includes these conditions?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval with these conditions as, as were presented by staff, and also the modifications that were here, with also the final wording that includes the amended from time to time phrase. Discussion on that motion?
Now, you said, Mayor, that was the annexation and the rezoning.
It is, that's right. The motion is for annexation and rezoning in one motion and one vote. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, that passes unanimously.